Sorry, sir.
That's okay, I don't like to play.
Ready? We will call the June 10th State County Commission meeting to order start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Morning, everyone. Okay, we'll call all three commissioners are present, Michelle Morris is present, Josh Knight is present. Additions or deletions to the agenda? Did we have something from Colleen on her internship?
I haven't accepted this letter that she had sent to sign. My computer loads here on standby.
So could we add her under new business name? Well, I have Colleen, but there was an internship. Anything else?
Are we gonna have a resignation rate for the NRP?
Josh?
Let's do an executive session.
Okay, we'll add an executive session, return client privilege. You want five, ten?
Five.
Thirty? Just asking you?
Yep, well, Michelle's.
Michelle?
Hi, probably I picked Tricia there and Michelle.
Tricia's dead, or Tricia ain't.
Probably all three of us.
And I assume you guys are here about the payroll. So I'm gonna go ahead and add you to the agenda. Put you at the top so we can get you back to going. We'll just put payroll discussion. Anything else that I missed? Okay, I'll need a motion to approve the agenda with the additions. Second, motion's been made, second in all favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Public comment, anybody here for public comment? New business, payroll discussion.
Would I like to go first? Yeah, I wanna know what the excuses are of why we didn't get paid on time, why did you take the payday? Or more, or more, yeah.
Yep, we are very aware that there was a glitch mistake, we're still looking for that answer. As soon as it was brought to my attention, Michelle had already been working on trying to figure out why. The best that we've been told so far is somewhere there was a glitch from the approval process from us to ADP receiving it, and so sixteen, seventeen, what was the final number, twenty? That did not get paid on the day, and there was no rhyme or no reason. It seemed like the majority was in your guys' department, but there were also...
We had nine.
You had nine?
Yeah.
There were also some from other departments as well, so we were trying to find the issue. But right now, we don't have a solid explanation as to why.
If this was to happen again, what would stop us from just getting a check for somebody so they don't have to wait all week?
Well, that's what we, that's what we were wanting to do and trying to do. The problem is the timing. This was figured out on a Friday, and so we're scrambling trying to get things issued and trying to figure out how we get somebody taken care of. But we were getting no answers from the other folks.
The answer I got from ADP was because payroll was approved, which nothing can be generated until it is approved. It says we can't find the root cause of why the hours did not go through. They were all on the worksheet, so when you guys clock in and the employee and the department head approve the time, it generates into this worksheet. And my responsibility is to make sure that like insurance is in. If you happen to do a paper form of tax withholdings, that that is put in. If you have garnishments, that those are put in. But I don't really have anything to compare hours to, so that's why you guys look at them so that you know that your hours are correct. So it goes into the worksheet, and then once I hit approve, that's it, like there's no going back.
We've had hours that we've approved before where their hours were changed when you told them.
And we had one like that this time, and I asked her, and she, her answer was that there had to have been a glitch somewhere after the approval, which to me, that's not a good enough answer. That doesn't help me fix it later, you know, I mean, if I don't know what's wrong, I can't change anything.
Because the one time it kicked our system back where we had to start over and start approving stuff, those two hours was taken away from employees' time, it was already approved by the department head. What I don't get is once it's approved by the department head, why anything would go in there and change after that fact. That should be set, that should be done. I'm not gonna approve of something that doesn't apply.
And that's why it shouldn't, I mean, because it just goes through and...
I mean, you're not, I guess, you're not messing with the hours, I mean, you're not changing...
Once they're approved, they're set like they're set, like I can't...
You're looking at deductions and contributions, stuff like...
Yeah.
What makes us think that this is gonna get any better on the two week day?
I don't know, I mean, I don't know what to tell you with questions like that. We're trying, and we, you have every right to be upset and mad and angry, but it's just a very bad situation at the wrong time. I mean, it's never any good, but here we're, we're trying to find the middle ground, just like we explained last time, to benefit the folks that have been working here for a long time, but also to attract employees for when all those... And it sucks. I was sick to my stomach, and I was mad for you, and Michelle was angry as well. That's why she jumped all over ADP to figure out what the issue really was. I mean, we don't know.
Don't ask them.
We know, we know there was gonna be hiccups, we knew that, you know? We knew there was gonna be issues when you onboard with another program, that's sometimes, that's how it goes, but we didn't know it was gonna happen with this kinda timing. I mean, we don't know that it's gonna happen again, we don't know that it won't. What we do know is we're trying to, we haven't forgotten that this happened. We're still working to find what that issue was, and make sure that when we do this again the next time, we don't have that problem, if we can find what the problem was. I think right now, if based on talking with Michelle, the biggest thing is just double check, double check, double check, and make sure we're not turning things in at the last minute. It gives us a little time.
That is one thing that does make things a little tighter on a timeframe. Until we do move to the two weeks, the sheriff's department still has to be hand entered. And they have a lot of employees, and I don't like hand entering, not because it takes longer, but because there's over over error. And I sometimes don't get it till, you know, I wanna say it was three o'clock or four o'clock last night.
Then that's where the ones that aren't doing what you guys have told us to do need to be punished, not the rest of us.
I don't...
I agree, the whole, whole party.
They need to be the ones getting slapped on the hand, your check being late.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't disagree.
But the, you know, the late check deal was weird because it wasn't just one, one department. I mean, it was weird, there'd be one person here, four people there, and so...
And it wasn't just things, because two people, and it just means two people didn't...
Right, and that was weird.
Right.
Now, ADP usually runs on alphabetical order, if you look at everybody's time and stuff, and this was so entirely random.
Yeah, and frustrating.
When less than I talked about that, we were trying to find a pattern. And so we did alphabetical order, that didn't work, because there were some at the beginning, some at the end. So I went by department, both the departments go, commissioners, clerk, treasurer, road bridge is last. Well, we had one, two in the clerks, we had one in tre... so that didn't work either. And then when they're telling me that they don't know because it's already been approved, that does not help me at all. So I...
We also have a couple places that we've got noticed that there have been a lot of us charged through fleet fill, fuels, beyond our payments. Lovely door, lending of building materials for the laundry yard.
Yeah, I spoke with Michelle about that yesterday. I told her...
Yes, we have, we have thirty more calls a week about nonpayment.
So I think what we're gonna do with that is I need a statement.
They send statements.
Yeah, we...
Well, no, you send invoices.
Same thing.
No, they're not.
They're not the same thing. Pretty much the same thing, the same information. I understand that completely, and the reason I'm telling you that is my clerk over at Burley gave used to get so mad at me if I would code a statement. And I had the same argument, like it's the same dang thing, it's the same information, and she's like, no, it's not, I pay off invoices, it's not statements.
The county is starting to look really crappy.
We, I understand that.
Now, nobody's busting down the doors when you hired on, not to pay.
And people aren't wanting to stay.
There's, yeah, I mean, we come up with a new reason why people don't wanna work here every week. I mean, I understand it.
Yeah, but the ones we have right now are legitimate.
Yeah. Yeah, I think every reason we have has been legitimate, trying to figure it out. That what I told Michelle is she needs to dedicate someone to get that caught up, because that is embarrassing, we shouldn't be not paying our bills. That's really the...
I think she had, she had a question, did you have a question?
I have the paper copies of all my invoices, I keep on her menu, and I have one for the work office. If it was held, you could have those copies, and you could look through your system, that was paid, not at all. That's how it was...
Christine's the least of the problem, like, I think...
But I have so many bills to just every day scan, and it's ridiculous.
I think one thing that may be beneficial to her is, is doing the cash receipting. And I can talk to Linda about that, that might be something that they may be interested in.
Well, I mean, you guys can kinda visit with that and work that out, but the biggest thing is we need to get those, those bills caught up. Because if these guys can't get fuel, they're not doing any work, and we can't get it.
If the sheriff doesn't get fuel...
Right, nobody gets it.
See yourself, and don't get fuel.
Right, so we need to make sure we get, collect whatever you need from her, and get that, that has to be handled ASAP.
And we go through, we scan to the step one, two, three, we go through, I look at them, I sign them.
Yeah, we understand you guys are doing what, what you're doing, and I've visited with Michelle a lot, I understand you're angry and upset, but she is swamped, I get it, just like a lot of offices here are swamped right now, we're in a rough situation.
But don't you have a bunch of people up there that...
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. What matters is, we need to work together to get the situation fixed, and that's what we're trying to propose. We're not gonna turn the commission meetings into bashfests. I screwed up when I first started here, and we allowed that, and we're not gonna do it. So as long as we're being polite, kind, and working to a positive solution, that's what we'll do.
Why am I just asking, there's other people up there that...
Yes, there is.
Only other times, they had a certain person doing this, a certain person doing that, a certain person doing that, and it kinda worked smoothly.
This isn't...
That's all that they have.
This isn't the other times, I mean, we've had a lot of turnover, there's a lot of people learning a lot of different stuff, yeah.
I think you're, you're right in some sense, but it needs kinda give them a hard time because they're, you guys are not normal. You're not normal department head employees as to what things are today. You take huge pride in what you're doing, and you do a very, very, very good job. We don't have those people anymore, we don't have the polandas anymore, and it's so important to cross train, because maybe you die, maybe your family member has a emergency, maybe for crying out loud, you take your, you take your vacation that you're maxed out, that you give away every year because you feel like you can't even take a day off. We all have to know the job, so... And things are so messy, it's kinda hard to cross train right now.
Okay, it's a quick question.
Certainly.
Let's say worst case scenario, we have an issue, glitches again. Do we have an emergency procedure if we need to cut checks on a Friday, that we have that ability to do that, or...
It, I mean, it's not that simple, but Michelle is working on getting some checks here and having an availability to...
I was gonna ask ADP if there's a way to do that, because there's not a way to do that out of CIC, because things will not, the monies won't line up, it's that it would make a disaster.
Well, but even if we had some of our own payroll checks still from when we were doing it, that way if this issue did come in, they can submit the time directly to you. I know it's gonna cause headache down the line without it gets filed, and not, yes, because we can't not have people getting paid. I mean, I understand frustration, absolutely.
So the new, the new system with the new clocking system, interfaces with CIC, right?
I don't...
No, it goes in with ADP.
And then when does it hit CIC to where then it records the payroll in CIC?
When they do their import. And apparently, the lady that was working on that abruptly left, so someone else had to take over, start kind of again, and they're working through all those ledger lines to be able to do that.
So like, let's say payroll closes, everything's finished, does it import to CIC immediately?
Yes.
Okay.
That's part of their process. We're trying to work through it, but if it doesn't work again, I mean, I'm not opposed to finding another solution. I mean, that's just what it is, but we have to take this time to try and work through it, at least find the issues.
Like you said, I'm, I'm not, you know, I complain some Mondays a day, but I'll give you an example of what's, you know, my saying so. He can get his check on Monday.
Oh, I know.
That's crap.
I'm very, I'm...
That is complete crap.
Yeah.
There's no excuse for that, no excuse for ADP or anybody to make a man wait four days.
Yes.
That's crap.
All I'm saying is, there's not a whole lot I can do for you, I mean, we're working on the issue.
Well, I know, but I'm saying, I think it'd make everybody a year a lot happier if, if we don't get paid on payday to be able to pull out checks and write checks right there, like we used to do twenty-five years ago.
Yeah.
Just writing a check.
Two years ago, three years ago.
Yeah, well, I don't remember, I was doing draft and positive for past...
And we're, I just, I don't wanna tell you that today until we can confirm it. Like I said, we're still working on the issue, it came up last Friday, and it's Tuesday today, so we're working to make sure that what we do try and put in place actually works, instead of just throwing a band-aid over it.
But this isn't the first time it's happened.
We had one other payroll that was a day late.
Yeah.
And that was because things come in late, and that was, Michelle was working on it, and she didn't get it out in time. And we had a reason for that, and I mean, everybody got paid that time at least. This time, people actually didn't get checks, that's, that's the most frustrating part about it.
They had no reason why.
And no, and no explanation.
I got an explanation for him, you need to fire him, because I want somebody to ask. When you make my wife cry because she don't know how she's gonna pay the bills, I've had enough. I want somebody's ass, and they need to be fired. Get rid of them, start writing checks, do the job. I'm happy, I'm out of here. Pass all BS around, it's a bunch of nonsense.
Okay, and Ryan, I'm also pretty concerned with if hours are changed, we need to know about that too. That's, I mean, every chance that shows, every time that shows up, we need to know, so we can track down what happened or who did what, or...
The last time was the, the month that we had the county council, two hours of a stadium away from an employee, where we had to go back and add it back in.
Good.
For some reason, two hours got deleted off it. It was the same night, it was at the meeting, got taken off, and Christine found it, his hours didn't match up. We needed to fix it for Jim.
No question, do we know when Brandon and I will get administrative access also? Because I don't think we've done that yet, Josh, has that gone, I knew you were gonna write something up or something about that. Because I don't have an ability to look, you know, if I wanted to call ADP and ask questions, I don't have access yet. And I think we had talked about, we were, the commissioners would have administrative access, so at this point, I, I'm learning a lot of this for, I'm hearing some of this for the first time, I get some updated emails of things that are going on, but I don't have access right now to call and say what's going on.
All right, three, I have access to it.
Well, there was a meeting a couple, maybe three, four weeks ago where that was discussed, but it hasn't been implemented, so I was just asking what we need to finish...
And you guys did have access to it.
What we need to do to finish on our end to where we all have access, and that way we, if we wanna call and ask...
That way we can all give butt joints instead of just one person.
Right, yeah.
You gotta know what's going on here.
Yeah, you're right.
Do you guys see each bill every month?
Yeah.
Do you?
I mean, we have a bill register that comes through.
Yeah.
We review all that, and then when they do, when payroll comes in, which that's another one we're working on. Payroll used to be approved before meetings, and we would be approved after checks were cut. Now, we're trying to work, that's another reason for switching things up, is so we can have payroll report before the checks go out. So if we do see an issue, it can be fixed before the checks go out.
Have the bills changed on the bills that were being approved? Have dates changed on the bills or...
We're doing the weekly, I mean, most of the time, she's presenting us with stuff weekly.
Yeah.
Okay, last, I know it was first and third Tuesdays.
Yeah, it used to be. We've, we've instructed, if you got bills, bring them weekly.
We're doing it differently to try to just be more current.
So then you would want the bills by...
Well, the reason that they're becoming every week is because some refuse to do the first and the third, they're still stuck on the tenth and the twentieth. But even with the twentieth, like I'm still giving them on the twenty-eighth. And the twenty-eighth, they can't be, they're not ready.
They're getting, if they're late, that's their problem, not ours.
That's why, that's why they have late fees, and it just, it is what it is at that point.
So you would want the bills like by Thursday at the latest, or on Tuesday approval? Or even still Friday?
I mean, the earlier, the better. I have three departments, and they just put them in as they come in, they're all labeled like... Oh, I don't even know what, for example, it'd be Linden Building Materials, INB for invoice, one, two, three, four. And they're all put in, they're like that, and then they put them in a folder. That would be like today, it would be dated six eleven. Even though it's six ten, like once I get them approved and stuff, they're not gonna be dated until tomorrow. And that's the way they keep track of them. That way they can just be done as they come in, and they're easy. And if there's any questions or anything like that, it just makes it a little easier.
I've heard rumor you have a new handbook, are we getting a new handbook?
We're talking about making some adjustments to the current one, if not, I mean, adopting, it's mainly the discussions about leaves.
And payroll's dates?
Yes.
Because ours still says the first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm still looking forward with the two week...
Unless we find some absolute reason not to, yes, but we're still working on that, we've got this month to... It sucks, I get it, it does.
This one didn't go so well.
Yes, I understand that.
And I think you just lost Andy.
And that's...
Twenty, twenty-seven years?
Twenty-seven years, one of the best late guys we got.
Yeah.
But let's go into more of why there's two weeks, it's not for recruitment reasons, there's a lot more to it.
Well, I know, that's, I mean, we've been talking about it for six months or better, I mean, there's a lot of reasons why. I mean, more current payroll, more, it gets the payroll in front of the commissioners for review before it goes out, if there's, there's a ton of different reasons.
It is definitely a lot of overhaul to begin with on my end. Once that's in place, it won't be bad, but getting there is gonna be a little rough.
I want me to smart a handbook, do you have enough people in your office, do you have enough people to help you?
I would say that I have enough people. I have just such a mess. For instance, we're trying to set values right now. We go in, we start rolling, life looks good, we find out there's like two hundred and fifty parcels that hadn't been put in. That doesn't even come from my office.
No.
And they weren't aware of it either, when you have people leave and then you start digging through desks and you find this stuff, I mean, what do you do? And they weren't aware of it either, when you have people leave, and then you start digging through desks and you find this stuff, I mean, what do you do? So, and they are supposed to be to the mailer and mailed out by the fourteenth, and well, it's the tenth. So, um, it's that kind of stuff, it's the issue.
Michelle, can I have a resolution number?
A resolution number?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
It's really frustrating, I mean, on this side of the table, too, just, we don't, 'cause you can't fix it, I mean, you can't just hit it with a hammer and fix it, so.
Probably should.
I would definitely say, before getting to the bottom of, like you say, being able to cut numbers and shit, that situation has been in the past before ADP was even here, you know? If me and him had a problem, or half of our paycheck wasn't given, and the whole thing was, we gotta wait till next month, and it was, you know, an act of conquest, to try it. I mean, I know there's, there are obviously people to jump through to do that, but yeah, I think if you guys hammer that down in the situation, there were situations different, you know? A lot of people get away with it, so, some can, you know, but to have that, it's probably not, if it happens next time, when it happens next time, have that streamlined, okay, you know, we just do this, this, and boop, there you go, eliminate a lot of issues that came along, it's different. But that's a fairly important thing to work on, because it's been in the past, dude, there was issues, you know, that.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-five dash eleven.
And are we sure that the ADP is importing to CIC, 'cause like, when, sometimes I'll run a budget status report, and I'll look at the commission ones.
I know, I had that answer.
And we only have, we only have January, February, and March payrolls that are like on the commission one, so that means.
But that's what I was saying, is they don't have that person with the ledgers quit, and they, that's what they're working through, and tell that ledger line that, uh.
So, they haven't hit CIC yet?
You don't want to hold those real hits, it will be a mess, that will be right.
You pass one of those each out. Okay. Uh, I don't.
There you go, hot off the press.
Thank you.
I don't have any further comments.
Yeah, at this time, I think we're gonna move on, uh.
So, there's gen- general, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, there's a general discussion about, you know, administrators, I think, just by default, under Kansas statute, the commissioners are the administrators and overseers of the county, usually for administrative purposes during the week until you can meet again. The chair serves as, as administrator, and then obviously, county clerk accomplishes a lot of that on your behalf as well. So, just for the, for purposes of IT server, kind of who, where the buck stops, so to speak, it's the commissioners, and then also with CIC and, and ADP. Um, it's your guys' decision how you wanna kind of set that up, I think we've talked before about different types of view access versus, you know, the ability to affect change, as a three-person board, you know, usually you wanna limit the permissions just so you don't break something.
Right, right.
But this would at least, um.
View, yeah.
But this, this would just articulate what's already the case, which is you are the overseers and administrators for all of these functions, but this gives a written document to ADP as co-administrators with Michelle, and you're basically appointing, continuing to point her as the main point of contact.
Okay. So, with that being said, I'll need a motion to approve Resolution two zero two five dash one one, Resolution Regarding Authorized Administrators for County Payroll System.
So, moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Here you go. Okay. Now, we'll close the discussion. Excuse me. Okay, Megan Ottenberg, I don't wanna butcher that.
I'm Tara, I'm.
You're Tara?
I'm here in place of Megan.
On behalf of Megan, okay.
Can you sit here?
No, right here, please.
Come on up.
Accepting the award on her behalf.
Morning.
Morning.
So, thank you for letting me come and visit with you today, uh, my name is Tara Alvin, and I'm the Government and Public Affairs Specialist with Cox in Kansas. And, um, Cox is committed to expanding broadband in unserved and underserved areas of the state, and I'm happy to be here today to share more about our expansion efforts, and that we'd like to build fiber into Osage County along Topeka Boulevard as part of our expansion initiative in Carbondale. Um, this built by this fiber and multi-gig speeds to rural customers outside of Carbondale, um, and we will be using our own private dollars for this expansion. Um, we also look forward to this as a start of a partnership, um, with more opportunity to expand within the county in the future. Um, so I, I won't go over this entire presentation in its entirety, but I just kinda wanted to share a little bit more about who Cox is, and what our expansion process looks like, and if you have any questions. Um, Cox is a hundred and twenty-five-year private and family-owned company with over twenty-five years of experience as a service provider in Kansas. Uh, some of the brands that you may recognize with us are Cox, uh, Cox Enterprises, Cox Automotive, Cox Media, and Cox Business. Slide five, you'll see our current existing nationwide footprint. Um, Cox offers low-cost internet plans such as Connect to Compete, Connect Assist, Straight Up Internet, NPCs for People as part of our digital academy programs. We offer Cox Digital Academy, which is a free resource with tips and tutorials on digital literacy, remote controls, Microsoft three sixty-five, as an example. We have nearly eight hundred Kansas employees living and working across the state, and we are dedicated to the communities that we serve, so we live and play in the communities. Uh, some of the ways we give back are sponsorships, grants, and all of these, et cetera. The residential services Cox offers are internet, TV, voice, and mobile, and a high level, high level of the business solutions we can offer are TV, internet, telephone, video cloud, disaster recovery, networking, and managed services. So, our construction process begins, and I do have, there's a little map in there, but there are larger maps, if you guys. Our construction process begins with us identifying the infrastructure and facilities before we begin to plan our own fiber in the right of way. Um, and then any homes, we will, we will deploy our lines at that time, depending on that map. Um, on the day of install, a technician would come to the customer's home, um, review the order with them, do a walkthrough with the customer at the home, and after services are installed, they'll show all the new services work, help answer any questions, and we also have tech support available to their staff. So, we've also included some marketing material that you may see during the construction process. And I believe we've provided the original copy of this letter, uh, Michelle, and a copy of our agreement. So, because Cox is a video service provider, according to the FCC and federal law, we file as a video service provider in Kansas, and under the law of Osage County could request up to a five percent franchise fee on video service, so that's what that is. And you can just return it to us, and we will get that implemented. So, are there any questions that you may have?
So, are you guys willing to do one overhead, or is it underground?
Um, they shared, it was, it's a mix of both.
Yeah.
Um, and we can certainly set up a reconstruction meeting with our, our team, um, who, who can do that with.
It would be Ryan Farn, he's the road and bridge director.
Okay.
Works director, you can get his contact from Michelle.
Okay.
Just to make sure, 'cause we do have some right-of-way permits, and there's certain areas where if you have to bore under a roadway or whatnot, there's certain criteria we have, just to protect that roadway. So, yeah, that'd be good to have with him.
So, your request today is in regards to the agreement?
Yes, and you, I mean, you can return that to Megan or myself by email, um, you don't have to decide that right now, but I just wanted to explain what that is.
Very good, I think we'll have Josh review that, go from there, it's exciting, more internet opportunities.
So, you're coming right up to the Carbondale community, but not going into Carbondale?
We, we are going into Carbondale as well.
Okay, and are you staying along Boulevard and going straight south? Or you're going into?
Yeah, we are going along Topeka Boulevard, um, I can get more than a kilometer from exactly where that is, I read the maps very well, but, um, so.
Well, this one goes right up to the, if I'm looking at it right, it goes right up to the, yeah. So, it looks like it starts the Shawnee County line.
Okay.
And goes to the top in the north of Carbondale, so I was curious if they were going the rest of the way.
In Carbondale, for sure.
Okay, well, they'll be excited about that?
Yeah, have you guys spoken to Carbondale yet?
Uh, we, we're, this is a very preliminary process, so we, we're just, we're just starting.
Yeah.
They're having meetings out there, their facilities.
Good, I'm sure they will be excited.
Diane, did you have a question?
Yeah, I really don't want that going through on property. Uh, the last time, I saw it through, it went all up, and, yeah, but it was like.
Well, they're in right-of-way, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, digging up, going in the case.
So, uh, where are you looking at, just so I can?
Right, I was looking at the beautiful market.
She's north of Carbondale about?
Two miles.
Two miles.
Well, I, I will say, anything that is done on property, we will restore it to as good, uh, condition.
That's what I've heard before, and it's never been the same.
I do understand, we do have an escalation treaty, and we'll definitely.
And it's all in the right-of-way?
Yes, absolutely.
I just jumped on, uh, Tara can prop you, because we've been, uh, and they promised they'd make it much better, well, they did.
I'd say now's the perfect time to get some contact information on who to escalate that to.
Do some preemptive work.
On who to escalate that to.
Yeah, you can be prepared.
'Cause it's in the, it's in the easement, it's getting right of. I mean, with, with her, with Cox, I, we, we can't go back.
Yeah.
Well, you said Verizon?
Yes.
Is that one of your competitors?
Uh, well, yeah, essentially.
So, Cox is vowing to do better than.
Yes, so Cox is vowing to do better.
Anything would be better, but I don't wanna have to deal with that, I mean. It's just absolutely awful.
All right, well, that's exciting.
Okay, if you have any additional questions, Michelle has my contact information, and I'll, that's definitely get in touch, you said Ron, was his first name?
Yes, Ryan Farn.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, SOS. Any problems? Did I say that right?
No, um, I mean, you did say it right, but I'm not here.
Okay.
As our community relations coordinator, I'm Nikki Edwards, I'm the executive director at SOS.
Okay.
So, I'm sure you all know Teresa, she's our fabulous Osage County advocate, I favor to say that. She doesn't have.
Sadly, I know that's a lie.
Um, so, you know, we are very proud of the work that Teresa does here in, in Osage County. Her numbers are so, so big, and as far as the number of services she provides, and you have to carry the clients that she knows, because people know and trust Teresa in Osage County, so we really appreciate her. Um, one of the documents that we provided, um, kinda shows some of those numbers, Teresa's part of our crisis services program.
Do we, I don't, we don't have that.
Here, I'll let you have it.
We can.
Yes.
I guess we'll share, it's okay.
So, we have four programs at SOS, um, the one that is most active in your county is crisis services, and that's our program that serves victims of domestic violence and sexual assault, and Teresa's department. And we also have our Child Advocacy Center, which occasionally serves children who are from Osage County. You are close to Topeka, so oftentimes, if a child needs a forensic interview, the family or the investigators will choose to go to Topeka, 'cause they have a center too. But we do occasionally have children from Osage County who come to us, um, because they're, they're, they've been abused and are in need of a forensic review. Um, we have fabulous, um, staff at our advocacy center that do really amazing work in a very difficult situation. We also serve children who are from your area who come to us for visitation, or families who come to us for visitation and exchange services. So, that's a, if you haven't been to our facility, if you're in Ecoria, stop by sometime just to ask for a tour, 'cause our children's programs have really great, um, like, living rooms where they can come and visit with their families, and even the interview room, and the family room in our advocacy center are just very quality and welcoming, and, um, we get a, really, we get a lot of families who are really appreciative of that, 'cause they're not coming to, you know, an office, like a sheriff's department, or to do that, that exchange, or that, that visit. So, it's just a way better, um, environment for them. Um, we are asking for ten thousand eight hundred dollars for the coming year, and that is the same amount that we requested, and we will approve for us for two thousand twenty-five, so, um, we would love to continue to receive your support, and the work that we do, and specifically, the work that Teresa does. What questions do you have for us?
I don't have questions anymore, we always hear great reports.
I've heard a lot from Teresa, because I've, I've lived her my whole life, it's how good work she does. That's really good, that's invaluable.
Do you have anybody that helps Teresa?
Uh, we do have other advocates that can, uh, that are housed in Ecoria, we have one that is also housed in Holly County, that can have assistance. Um, I don't know, I often, I have one, so.
'Cause I don't hear about you, so I just wondered if you were just a one-man show for the whole county, or?
So, actually, something very positive has been going on, I have my third volunteer in training, um, they just started with Rihanna, I think, so, these are local people that live here that are doing volunteer work here, so, um, we have one girl that's gonna be working down at Quinamo, we have the summer camp down there, she's gonna be going every week, um, down there. I have a person coming from Overbrook on court docket days, so that people don't have to sit alone, 'cause we have so many on the pocket.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, then we have somebody in training, so, I think those are really positive things. We also started this past spring, working in the frameworks program at Ellicott.
Yes.
And that was amazing, it was such a great experience for me, and so, getting into the schools, I've been working a lot with Maggie, a social worker in, um, their cultural school district, and so we're hopeful that we can get into that program. I see that as the most positive work that we can do, and it's working with kids.
Yeah.
And trying to provide that information about their safety and their privacy, and to have that kind of trickle-down, it's really fun work. Um, they are, um, the energy that kids have, it just, it is, and that's, I'm very grateful to be able to do that. Yes, I have volunteers, and I also have coworkers, and Danielle comes out, I'm working from the low, so, my coworkers are fun and energetic and exciting to work with, and they do a lot of work.
It's just amazing to me that you've been able to do it and, and keep that demeanor, I mean, it's such a, uh, when you do that type of work, you see a lot of the worst side of folks, and so, I, I am impressed, and I, I don't know how you do it, so, I just wanna thank you for doing the work you do, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that, but I always want to bring that back to the people that do the real work, which is the people that I know. So, um, they take the steps, um, they're hard steps to take and they do that. We also have, um, great cooperation and collaboration with court staff and the judges and, um, the county attorney's office and law enforcement, just amazing. And walking to the county attorney's office and ask for financial support or ask for, um, interaction. And just to have your voice heard is one of the most important things in the whole world. So we have that here, we're lucky.
Yeah, we are.
We're lucky to have you guys. And we appreciate that too. For sure, I mean, the, the relationships and the collaboration that Teresa has built and we have built here in Hobbie County are invaluable to, to our work. You know, she can work one on one with a victim, um, client, but if they need, you know, a P O A or something, just those relationships have been really key to, to helping them get to the next, the next step. And I, I do want to put another plug in, we did start, um, summer sensation. Is our, um, our summer camp program at, at Quinmo. And we have 22 kids there last year.
Wow.
So I was really, yeah, I was happy about that. I was able to go one day last year and sit in and help out and that's a very energetic bunch.
That's awesome.
Yes. The principal down there, while Oldburg is a miss, um, she's just so supportive of the kids and that. That's one of the, the most exciting schools we ever had a chance to visit, Quinmo, that school, it's great. It's just, it's just fun.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Very good. Well, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for your opportunity. Did you have a talk about what we do?
Have a good day.
We do.
Very appropriate. That was awesome, because it does a, you know, a lot.
Yeah, just, it sucks that it does so much.
Right, well, yeah, the needs, yeah. Okay, thank you for your patience. We now have the floor.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Morning. Morning. Brad, Brad Hawkins.
Nice meeting you.
Jess Hawkins.
Hello.
Hello. So this is the time of year that we like to get together with our clients and do some, you know, mid-year planning and we appreciate the opportunity to visit. Um, you know, we've come a long way over the last four years and, and working on your behalf. And we just want to, you know, proof up and just kind of see where you're going down, you know, what you're thinking as far as the benefits that are being offered today. Um, you know, we work with Blue Cross for a lot of our customers, but we are, um, you know, very familiar with other options that are available. So whether we support you with Blue Cross or, you know, something else that's available, um, we're available to, you know, consult with you and talk through the pros and cons of each approach and determine what's the best option for your group as a whole and the employees that you work with. Um, so we kind of want to just open it up to just see how we can help, you know, if you've thought about maybe what direction you're looking to take, you know, if there's any changes you want to explore and, you know, timing for that before the renewal, so.
What's the timeframe that you guys need when it comes to producing the renewal?
Well, the renewal that Blue Cross will provide is typically the first of October.
Okay, that's, because now we're on January, I see, yes, okay.
So they evaluate claims data through August and consider that with the renewal.
Uh, we had Blue Cross, well, the state plan didn't have Blue Cross. We had them here about, was it quite a month ago yet? Uh, because that's something that I was interested in exploring for employees because I'm actually a part of it. And so I know the coverage and we have a lot of concerns about our coverage, our current insurance from our employees. They don't feel like it's as good a coverage as they once had, you know, because as you are well aware, the county was on the state plan at one time. Um, that's what I'm interested in, is the coverage, a good coverage for our people. I mean, everything costs more money, the better you get, but I'm not afraid to invest in our employees to make sure that they are, their health and wellbeing is covered, is being covered.
That's why you call it a benefit, benefits, yeah.
Right. So that's my biggest thing, but what, I noticed you have some, is that current new numbers or projected numbers or?
Yeah, so basically what we've done is we've brought back where your claims are developed and then we've got also some information on where we were with the state plan. And what we've done, what we've reduced together. When we started, um, I met at a, at a conference in Kansas City four years ago and the county was with us, they, I guess, and there was a desire to look at some alternatives. And though that desire to look at alternatives led to a fully mature plan with that town. And I think our goal, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think our goal was always to get to a self-funded plan. And the reason we wanted to get to a self-funded plan is because if the claims are lower, uh, that the premium and the money that the county would pay would ultimately be determined by the risk of the county. Frankly, nine, nine out of 10 people in the state of Kansas would rather be under that mechanism where you have some level of control. The, the one or two that don't want to be on their own would be in the state plan. And, and they would go in the state plan because their claims are way higher than the premium that's required by the state plan. And so we're, I mean, and there's a lot of groups out there that we would look at. And, and I think that's what Jess and I would both say, we'd say, we don't care where you are. We, we, we don't care with the state plan or with self-funded or captive or with Blue Cross of Kansas. They're all, there's pros and cons with every alternative. And it's our job, as you can point out.
Right.
And it helped, it helped you all make the right decision. Um, we saved an awful lot. We saved almost $700,000 by moving away from the state plan. And we're, we've become, knowing that kind of the agenda was to look at some alternative plans, we went ahead and looked at the state plan compared to where you are right now. So just so we can get the numbers on the table, as your advisor, if you will, as your advisor, we say, well, let's look at where, what the state plan would be now versus where you are now and let's just talk about it. And I think that's, that's pretty much where we're going. And that's what we have, so.
Well, I think you guys have done what you were asked to do. I don't dispute that at all. Um, and I, I would maybe argue a little bit, I don't have that information in front of me about the money that's been saved due to the social changes, but saving money is a big issue. But not as big as retaining employees.
Yeah, and, and I really welcome the opportunity to get the coverage issues on the table. But because, you know, I mean, we, we mirrored the plan with the state plan when we set up the plan with Blue Cross. So, um, yeah.
So I think if we wanted to just skip to page eight, if you want to reconsider it with your time as well, um, and if we have any other time, we can circle back to other parts of the presentation. But this page here, our page eight, is where we're illustrating where you were in 2024, which you're now 2025, and then the numbers that we received from the state plan that are becoming effective July 1st. Um, so when we were on, started the self-funded plan in 2024, um, those numbers are at the top. So the dark blue represents your fixed cost. That's what you're guaranteed to pay on a monthly basis based on the below enrollment on the bottom of the page. And so that number can functionally be based on enrollment, but that's what your fixed cost was for that year. The variable cost is in the lighter blue and that's variable because that's your claims cost. You're, you're only going to pay that amount if your claims run to that level. So for 2024, your maximum funding was 1.3 million. Then we received an average renewal for 2025 of five and a half percent, uh, which is well below trend. Trend at this point is, you know, nine to 10% renewal, um, increase. So we outlined then for 2025, your expected cost and your maximum liability. Because with the self-funded plan, you have the ability to set your funding level either out where Blue Cross expects your claims to be or at your maximum liability. And so we wanted to outline both of those for you. So the fixed cost for both remains the same, 522,710. And then at expected is 1.2 million, maximum 1.3 million. One of the benefits of being self-funded is you do get rebates on the pharmacy. And so we did net that off for, for 2025. We projected an annual rebate of 60,000 just based on what you've received thus far for this year. So we did net those off the total cost for expected and maximum on the Blue Cross plan. So again, with the self-funded plan, you're only going to pay up to that maximum funding level if your claims run at that 853,617. Um, then the state plan is listed there. Now with the state plan, as you know, there's no underwriting required and they, um, you know, take everybody into that plan who's interested and qualifies based on, you know, you know, being a county qualified departmental, so you're not employed with the state. But, um, your total cost there is 1,610,000. So compared to your current costs, even at the worst scenario at max, um, there's potential savings of 300,000 there on the table. Now again, we don't know what the renewal at Blue Cross will be, so this is just comparing your current cost to the state plan.
I can, I think the big thing was too with the 300,000 is if there was a complication, probably the biggest would be the out-of-pocket. You know, when we go to Blue Cross, uh, they got some flexibility as far as the plan gives. So if you wanted to, I think the deductible's are very similar, but, you know, when you say the biggest objective, the biggest, um, issue with the plan from the employee standpoint is the coverage. I say, well, let's find out what those issues are.
I think on the, uh, high deductible plans on state, they had to go up, but that's a federal requirement due to those HSA requirements or whatever.
Right, right.
So I think those are probably identical. I think they're, I think the deductible on the PPO was like 200 difference, I think. I think the current one's a nine or, I don't even know what it is, 900 maybe? I think the other one that they offered is like maybe 800?
Well, and, and I think that's the thing, if you flip over to the next page, it'll give you, um, the rates broken out by plan design for the state plan, uh, versus with the plan that you're on right now. So, you know, uh, yeah, the premium.
This one?
Is significantly lower.
Where's the state information?
On the far right.
Oh, to the right. I didn't keep looking, sorry.
So then the, the top, you know, column or row, I guess you could say, for each, um, plan, um, represents the total cost and then the employee contribution is listed below. And so that's how it's broken out. And we are assuming that these employee contributions that you have today are listed accurately, but we did want to confirm that those are the numbers that we have, um, listed there for 2025.
Yeah, so, you know, honestly, the, the plan on the PPO, uh, the loaded deductible PPO, you pay 1,038, uh, as of 7/1/2025 with the state plan. Uh, with the plan with Blue Cross that Osage has, the worst case scenario is 864. So, you know, you got $200 higher deductible, but you have about $1,200 plus savings. And that's worst case scenario. I mean, we don't expect the claims run all the way to the max. So, uh, again, you know, you go to the state plan, you're paying that premium irregardless of how your claims are. I mean, that's, that's just a sum cost. Um, and you got, you know, $300,000 savings in the worst case scenario. I can't imagine the county wanting to pay $300,000 more in worst case scenario than what you have right now.
We'll get your imagination cap on, because if it's better coverage and it's worth the money. Absolutely.
Well, and that's what I would say, well, well, let's talk about, let's talk about the coverage.
That's what he was asking, that if there are differences, because we did mirror the first day or the first year. And so if there's, like I said, I think on the deductibles, two of them are the same. I think maybe the PPO is a hundred dollars difference, but you could look at the copays, you could look at the co-insurance and out-of-pockets and then just see where.
And, and, you know, one of the issues that we've also worked is the contributions by the employees. And what happened is the employees, my understanding is the employees are not paying for single coverage.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
With the state plan, they're required to pay for single.
That surprised me because I didn't think that was how it was a few years ago, but they said there's a certain, they did say a certain dollar amount and I didn't.
They have to pay $82, $82.22 for the PPO. They have to pay 70, 72 for the, for the option A, the load, the low deductible. And then they have to pay 49, 72. And what's interesting about it is the employees pay, according to the information that we have, employees pay about the same in total on the state plan as what they pay right now currently based on the contributions that we have. So, uh, you know, that's not really an issue, assuming that the contributions are right that we have here, because they might not be, I don't know. You know, I, I, we, we asked Michelle to confirm, I'm not sure if, if that's been confirmed or not.
We didn't change any of the employee contributions from last year.
Well, employees on the plan contributed for single coverage, correct?
Correct, yeah. So this should be correct.
This should be correct.
I have some updated, not that I'd be able to find it, let's see.
Yeah, my single employees, my, uh, my employees at my work for the single coverage pay $39, uh, per page period. So that's, you know, twice, uh, twice a month or whatever that would be, like $80 a month.
That's good, I mean, honestly, that's pretty good. The average, but the fact that they're paying nothing right now.
Yep. No, I pay like 250 something per page cycle, so that's like around 500 a month-ish for mine. But I've got spouse independence, yeah.
Well, and I think that I would go back to what Jess started and had from the start would be, we want to understand how we can help. You know, if the coverage is an issue, um, let's get the issues on the table so we can optimize plans. I guess that's what we want to do.
So together, you mentioned a comparison side by side, the plan designs would be helpful.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. I mean, I don't know how much work it is, you could do a quote for what our current coverage is, staying in the self-funded. And then you could do a quote if we made the changes, whatever those, I don't think there'll be a lot, but there might be a few.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
If there's any differences that the state plan will have for January 26th and do a quote on that.
Sure.
Where we can compare that. And then on the state plan, do they change their premium every six months? Is it January and July the premiums change or is it just once a year?
July.
July's when they change it, though.
July.
Early in the year.
Even, okay, even though the policy runs calendar. Okay, even though the policy runs calendar, the state does premium increases in July? Okay. That's kind of after the fact then, so they kind of see where they're running and then they do the premium.
Right, right.
Okay, that makes sense now why they do that. I didn't understand why they did that. In regards to other companies that you work for and stuff outside of Blue Cross, what are the other companies that some places are going with that have, they, like people have been happy with? Because you only have about five major, I mean, you've got your Aetna, Humana, I mean, there's four or five. Cigna.
Cigna, Aetna, United Healthcare, Blue Cross.
Are those, are the other ones looked at much? Where's Blue Cross your primary?
Blue Cross is so strong, they're in. I mean, United would probably give us a one-year deal, but like what happened with Aetna, I mean, we say, and again, if you want to flip over and we can debate out of one page, on my own debate, it's just, this is what, if you look at page seven, we moved that 7-1 almost three years ago, July 1st, 7. Aetna gave us a fully insured plan that had 175,000 savings and premium on the dental division and the health. Well, with the dental division was an additional one. So we had about 225,000 savings. They gave us a discount by adding the dental division in on the medical plan. And then they gave us a one-month premium on the debt. So they gave us roughly, what was that, just about 340,000. And then the premium went up with the state plan. And then on that required dependent contribution, what happened is the state plan has what they tell you what to do. So they tell you how much the employees need to pay for that coverage.
Right.
Now, the question is, I don't know whether Osage County actually wasn't forcing that. Do you know that ever?
What?
It seemed like, it seemed like there was, one of the things was is they wanted, the state plan wanted employees to pay X for the benefits.
We were, the way I remember it, we were following whatever the state plan required.
Okay.
As I started looking into it, I wasn't opposed to staying on the state plan, but I wanted the county to have some flexibility that if we wanted to be able to change that contribution or we wanted to change deductibles or copays or anything to try to help alleviate some costs, that's the part with the state plan is once you sign the contract, it's, the county loses the ability to shop the market and make any changes. But the other thing that with the, when we left the state plan, we actually got a quote from Blue Cross and, and with Aetna, and Blue Cross wouldn't be competitive the first year.
They weren't competitive.
And then when we went to Aetna, and then when we came, then the next year, Blue Cross came back and said, okay, we'll be competitive this year. And then we were able to get back to Blue Cross at a better rate.
Yeah, and that's when we went to the self-funded.
Yeah.
That's when we went to the self-funded plan as of January 1, almost a year, around 15, 17 months ago.
Well, and there really is no way to debate because part of the reason that we've all made a big turnover was the change in insurance was not, not your fault or their fault, it's just what people chose to do. But I know that that decision was a big part of it. And then currently, just in speaking with our people and having the state plan myself, I know what it covers and use it. I've been involved in it for almost four years. I love it. Speaking with our employees, I don't know too many of them that love where we're currently at. And I understand the savings aspect of it too, and that's great to show that there's tons of savings and whatnot, but we can talk about 300,000 savings, but what did it cost us in turnover? You have to deduct that from that savings as well, in my mind. So that's what I'm trying to weigh. Because as for what you guys have done and the history to this, I agree. You had a goal in mind and you set out to do it and you guys accomplished it. That's all. But now we have an issue. And that's what I'm looking at.
Well, I appreciate that communication. Appreciate that. I mean, whatever we can do to talk to the employees to understand what the situations are, I mean, if that would be open to that, if, you know, if you wanted to do a survey just to say, you know, what are the issues with the plan right now? There is no question moving to Aetna was, I mean, it always is. Moving to Aetna from Blue Cross, nobody wants it. But it did pay the tab to do something different. Now, something different is not meeting your needs. And it's just like we go back and forth with the process of comps. I mean, you know, I'd like to understand what specifically with Blue Cross. The one thing I can think of from what I understand is GLP-1 drugs are covered in the state plan or Aetna. They're covered in the state plan. Blue Cross does not cover.
Rate loss.
Oh, they lost. They cover it for diabetes.
If you have the other benefits still.
So, I mean, I can see.
They'll get there. I think they'll get there. It'll save them money on the back end.
Whether it's major insurance or insurance. If it's 80 dollars a month for a medical.
Yeah, but if they, they get healthier and they get off four or five other meds, they'll get there.
You get it. They want you off meds. Depends on what you believe in this. There's a lot of money made.
Well, I, for me, I would like if you can identify what the differences may be.
Sure.
Between the current plan and what the state plan offers in January and do a quote on that.
Yep.
Well, yeah, and if you have the time, one of the things that I think might be beneficial as well is we've got some data that what happens when you're self-funded and you're on your own, we're able to measure, we're able to measure how your claims are compared to the average. And where I was going is whenever I look at the claims data group, I said, okay, well, let's see where the claims are compared to premium, right? Claims compared to premium is equal to profit for the insurance company or loss for the insurance company. So we always want to make sure that, you know, if you move to the state plan, typically most companies would move if their claims are higher than the premium, right? That would represent really good value for the county. So if we look at, and Jess, I'm almost to your thunder here. If you look at, let's look at page number 65. Page number five will show us kind of how the claims are developing. It's this page here, you guys, you guys with me on the page. And if you look at the box in the bottom right-hand corner and you look at current, that's going to show you a pro-member, pro-month claims charge for Osage County in the most recent year, most recent year from January 1 to April 30th. And if you look at the bottom, the average pro-member, pro-month claim is 338. So that's telling us that the average claim out here, and granted that's this year, is 33% below their book of business. So far, so far this year.
That's 25?
Yeah, that's, that's current year. So far, so good. Now, last year, if you look at that, we say, well, claim to bad. Then, can you see the 650 there? You guys see that? We'll flip over to the next page. And what happens is when you're self-funded and you're on your own with Blue Cross, any claim above 50,000 is paid by Blue Cross. So the county does not pay any claim above 50,000. That's called a stop-loss law. So anything above 50,000 is paid by Blue Cross. If you look at our largest two claims, which are this seventh and eighth down, you guys see that? One of the numbers, the member ID is starting with four. It's, it's the next to last and then the next next to last. There was one claim for 258,000 and one claim for 200,000. That was last year. Those two claims, those two claimants are both gone. So they're no longer, they're no longer on plan. So my point would be, you know, our large claims at least as of right now are not risk. They're, they're gone and it's, you know, it's not, I mean, in my view, and again, I'm not talking about the plan or the coverage, I'm just talking about the finances. It's, you know, why you would move when all of our claims have been paid by Blue Cross, we don't have any that we know of to speak of that are significant moving forward. So that will just give you an idea of kind of an update on how the claims run. And just, just while I cover, well, before I go on, any questions on that? Does that, does that make sense? Okay. Okay, we've got some more information back on page four that might be event two that kind of gives you an update on where we are this year compared to where we were last year.
Yes, so on page four, we've outlined the claims from January through May 2024 to January through May 2025. So for those same five months in both time periods, how things have evolved differently. So your medical total payments are actually down 34% compared to this time last year. Our large claims are much less significant. You know, they were 203,000 last year at this point for payments over about 50,000 stop-loss levels. So those are Blue Cross's liability. And you'll just see that, you know, we're looking at similar enrolled employees, you know, wherever to see a large increase or a decrease, that may indicate why there's differential, but you're essentially the same for both time periods. So it's positive to see that we're starting off the year in a much, much more positive position than last year.
I want to complete this talk call and just talk about the upcoming renewals on page three.
Okay, so yes, the last page that we haven't reviewed is page three. And that's just indicating that we do have all of the plans for renewal in January. Aetna division policy with Aetna has been in a rate guarantee, but that is expiring. So we will have the medical dental vision and then that safe to say all as of January.
Yeah, so as far as the next steps, while I'm here, if you'd like to look at the coverage and see what we can do to match the coverage with what the state plan has. So as far as the coverage goes, to make sure that we've got it at least as close as we possibly can to what you have, what you have with the state plan. Is there anything else that you would be like to do some surveys or research with the employees and maybe, you know, kind of get that out there to see?
Do you have a survey that you use?
We can find a survey. By all means, we can.
That kind of identifies what normally are kind of the big topics.
We can provide some of that for you. I think it'd be, I mean, if you don't mind, we pay for it. I mean, we, what we pay for the survey, I think it'd be a great idea just to kind of gauge what, because, you know, there's always five or six people that, you know, that have an issue and lots of times they, you know, guide the message for the entire group. But I'm not, I'm not discounting what you're saying, I acknowledge what you're saying. That's a lot, one or five percent.
What I fear, what my experience has been with self-funded stuff is great. I mean, I like it, as long as you have the large enough pool of employees where it still feels anonymous. When you have smaller employee bases, that your savings end up reflecting people's reluctance to spend them, you know, it's like it's, like they don't want to spend it. They don't want to be that guy, you know? And so.
That's a good point.
So that would be one of my fears with.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
But I'm not in the business of insurance either, so I'm, you know, I'm from the outside looking in, so.
No, you make a good point there. I think it's, I don't know that we ever went to the employees and said, we're self-funded.
Yeah.
I don't think we ever went there and said, we're moving to a self-funded plan. I think we said, because now sometimes we say, we want you.
Oh, yeah.
We want you to do that because we want the employees to be conscious of their decisions on our own. You know, this transparency thing is a huge thing on our register.
Oh, yeah.
But we never, we never really were, came out with that and said, we're moving to a self-funded plan. We did say that we're moving away from the state plan. We did say that. And when we moved that, we earned a lot of rights. And when we moved to Blue Cross, I think it got better. Was it perfect? No, no, it wasn't perfect. Again, honestly, it didn't work as.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But.
Well, and things just.
We want to make it as perfect as we can, we're able to try to make it, you know?
And in the insurance market, me being on the provider side, we've seen such a huge change in 25 years, but the biggest change has been the last 10. Where copays, co-insurance, deductibles, out-of-pockets, I mean, they drastically changed compared to the first 15 years of our business until now.
That's just the Affordable Healthcare Act.
That is exactly what it is.
Affordable now.
100% is what's driving it, but it's in force, there's nothing that you can do about that. There have been lots of changes, unfortunately.
Yeah, the other thing I did want to take is we sent out some messages in regard to Waco affiliating the Fund Digital. We've got some new ownership within our company and what that does, I think, even though it was a process for being a sign on the dotted line and saying, this is what I'm going to do, because I love, love to have a run of the company. But I will say that we're able to offer some things that we were not able to offer before. And some of those, kind of just naturally listening, some of those might be of value to you all. And what I mean by that is we've got an HR consulting division and that HR consulting division can help you all. I mean, I, you know, you've got some challenges and I know Michelle has a lot, she's got a lot on the plate. And I think some of the things, like they'll make a draft to your employee handbook, they can set up, they can review all of the compliance requirements by the state of Kansas, they can look at all your hiring information, all your applications, all the state guidelines. So there's a lot of services that they can offer, that we can offer up to you right now that we were not able to offer up before. And then I think the other thing is on our side of the fence, you know, we've done a lot of benefit capital work and, you know, kind of to your point, Brandon, when you're self-funded and you're on your own, particularly when you're, with Blue Cross, you've got, even when you're Blue Cross on your own, it's a three-year renewal history, there's a process. And frankly, most of our clients that go to Blue Cross and are self-funded, they never leave. They never leave because of what we've been, what, I mean, last year you ran that and your maximum got 5% in the middle. If you were with the TPA, you would have gotten a lot higher than what you're there. But anyway, with this company, we've just got some, a lot of resources, different captives to look at, the insurance market, there's some buy power, I think, that there's some better things that were, some invisible things were involved with clients, so.
Colin does it with you, I'd be interested to learn. I think I got your email when you sent it out a while back and I didn't follow up on it. I read it and I.
She sent the bunch out.
I didn't.
You get lost in there. Sorry about that. That's really sorry about, that's not necessarily a bad thing.
I try to, well, I try to follow, like soon as I get emails, I try to follow up within a day or two, because if I don't, then I forget. And so in this case, I should have followed up back then.
Well, we just wanted to thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a great day. You do the same.
I'll second that.
Second. I guess there's been a motion for recess.
Okay. No, we're just trying to.
No recess. We're fine.
We're fine.
There's a couple minutes left here.
I think, Chris, you want to come on up?
Mr. Wells?
You just got a couple. What's that? Oh!
Leave your relatives out of it.
Excited?
Good there.
Seven days. Did they hash out the dog for you to get?
Uh, still working on it.
Yeah, and what we does a lot. I just didn't know if they provided us with things yet, or...
Uh, I haven't heard anything.
Oh, sweet. The pig was done. When did that get done?
Yesterday.
Oh, so not in time to catch that last little bit of rain?
Uh, we did, uh, the training yesterday, but it did catch the rain, and it looks great through the walls.
Good, good.
I have some videos in the brain.
Good.
Pictures to make sure.
But it's hard to see before you get that top coat on there. I mean, it's hard to tell.
There's one tunnel about to happen.
Yeah.
Appreciate you guys.
You're doing all right.
Right.
Yeah, they've done a really good job.
Those Washington guys is amazing.
It's choreographed, yeah.
It's like that little machine?
That was crazy. They were the worst at this.
Oh, yeah.
How's everything else going for you guys? I mean, aside from the jail, I mean, everything? I know you've had some personnel changes, talent.
Personnel's been hard this year. As for the county stuff, I mean, obviously we have job security. I'll just go on, so we did have a really good turnout, some reserve fishing derby this weekend.
Nice.
Think the kids had fun, which was important, though.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah, good PR is good.
Okay. Anything? Any questions? Need a motion to approve the status payroll change reports brought forth by Sheriff Wells.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Um, if I can interrupt for a second?
No.
I'm gonna do anyhow. So, just to brag on Chris a little bit, so he's taken it upon himself to, uh, do an email to me when he's had a change, whether someone leaves or goes on leave or changes or whatever. And it may be like two days after it was effective, but it has helped me tremendously in trying to get the front end of stuff done, even though the form may not have been had a chance to go through yet, but it's like capers and insurance.
So you don't figure it out at the end of the month?
It's been a huge, huge, huge help to make things a lot more efficient, so...
Thank you, sir.
If I could get every other document to do that, it would be great.
Have a good day.
You as well, thank you.
See you.
Are you prepared over there? Do I got time for Trish's permit?
No, I'm not prepared. You can do that. Terry only says... Uh, well, here's this one you want to do it.
The application for firework stand.
D nine.
Is it a year-long one?
Did they change that mistake?
Hurricane.
Hurricane. Tell them to talk about burning down. Firework at a time.
Moved to California for that.
I think suburbs are greener than they used to be when I was a kid. It seems like there's less chance to run grass down. I mean, I don't know, just almost, it was, it's almost like the rains carry further into the year than when I was a kid.
Just because they didn't have colored pictures back then, you didn't know.
That is true. You hear him over here? With that being said, that a motion to approve the special event for permit for a firework stand for Linda Long?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Got a bunch of comedians on this commission. Oh, there's another little one. There, now we're... Okay, we have a motion for you.
Oh, this is different. I was thinking it was... This is just official, what we already did. I thought we already did this. I thought we already did this. Or is this just? I thought we already did this.
Yeah.
This is...
So this starts, and this is the next six months or whatever. So we can, we can only do this... This one? I thought it said July first. Well, this has a July first date on it, so I guess let me reread it. So we just do it in six, six-month increments?
Committee Commission may appoint an interim county appraiser with the approval of the Director of Property Evaluation for a period not to exceed six months and provides further that such interim county appraiser need be an eligible appraiser as defined in KSA 19-430. Commissioners finds that Michelle Ruck should be appointed as interim county appraiser of Osage County, Kansas. Be appointed interim county appraiser of Osage County, Kansas for a period of six months commencing July 1, 2025, or after the date of approval by the Director of Property Evaluation as set forth below whichever date is later. So that means that we are appointing her for six months.
Starting July first.
From July first.
But are we good until July first?
Starting July first or upon approval. So this might take effect if it takes him another three days to prove it.
Oh, whatever the later date would be?
Right.
I got you.
Correct.
He don't know. I'm, I'm the...
Need motion to approve Resolution 2025-12.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. What? It's all right.
Putting on your tab.
Okay, now, are you prepared for the exact section?
No, let's do this one first since we've got everybody. Regarding a moratorium on the neighborhood revitalization plan. Do you want a date certain to begin, uh, accepting applications or just say until further action, the board, it's suspended?
Well, that's what you want.
I would like to have a date, a target that we try to meet, and I guess we could also...
You may put that as a suggestion or a requirement for yourselves.
What, how much time do you guys think you need? I'd like to have a...
I, I'm just saying, you guys can do anything. You can work on it in August, but do you want the resolution to force reopening?
I'd like them to have what time they need and then kind of coordinate that with that.
Right, but you can still just say we hope to do this and not require it.
So have a tentative.
But if, yeah, just a suggestion, like intended.
So I think you guys said September? Is that what you said? Meaning?
Hopefully to present.
I see. Okay, sorry. Yes, I was, okay.
Get all that?
Yeah, so until further action by the Board of County Commissioners, and hopefully I got the department's right. Osage County Planning and Zoning Department slash Land Development and all other county departments and agents are hereby directed to suspend acting upon any application received pursuant to the 2022 Osage County Neighborhood Revitalization Plan and Resolution 2022-10. I'll put or. Until further action by the Board, no application received pursuant to the 2022 Osage County Neighborhood Revitalization Plan or Resolution 2022-10 shall be accepted by the Osage County Planning and Zoning Department slash Land Development or any other county departments or agents.
Sounds lovely.
Um, do you, uh, Trish, do you receive them, or do some of them go through the appraiser, or...
Generally, I receive them.
Okay. Do you want three copies or one to, one to look at?
One to sign.
Uh, did you get the...
Would you, would you do, I can...
Brandon, Heather, you want a copy?
Sure, please.
Copy? I'll just read it on the way by.
Hot off presses.
And Michelle, we got 12 and 13 for these. Am I right?
Any questions? Any questions?
Oh, sir.
Need a motion to approve Resolution 2025-13, Resolution regarding Authorized Administrators for Way.
Oh, I'll pick that, I know. Aside.
I didn't play basketball.
Suspension.
Copy paste, copy paste.
For the Revitalization Act Program.
The whereas's were accurate.
Okay.
That's what I do when I get impatient. I try. Okay, now, that being said. Need a motion to approve Resolution 2025-13, a resolution regarding suspension of new applications for Osage County Neighborhood Revitalization Program.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. All right. So then, that's that. That's a wrap on most part.
Time five minutes. No.
Okay, I move, we enter the exec, executive session with all three commissioners. And Josh and I are the attorney-client privilege for five minutes. We will return at 11:15.
Topic is legal advice.
Topic, legal advice.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries. I'll delay five minutes.
Okay.
Snag! Okay, with that being said, no action taken in executive session. Mendoza intern, you have her document taken?
Um, I just have her, like, her letter. They've got to sign everything.
Did she not make the sheet? Is this a paid position?
Yes.
She needs to make up a sheet. Bills? Everybody see the leg of the bills?
While you guys are glancing at that, I want to remind everybody that June 24th is our evening committee meeting. It's kind of a quarter of evening.
June 24th is the evening one. I will try to attend by phone. Will be out. I'll look, but I probably won't be there.
Do what?
I'll look, but I probably won't be there, but I'll be in the same situation. Commissioner Smith, this, um... This works now. I'm gonna keep this one. Do you want them to throw that away or?
Where it comes from.
I don't know. You require it. It was the one that was over there.
Vince was asking me about him all night, and I have no idea. Josh could drag him in here. I don't know where he came from.
Osage County Surplus Property somewhere.
Every corner of this corner.
Corner of that.
Can I just put up a sign that says surplus property right there?
We would have so much room if we could just purge.
Everything's on there.
Yeah. I generally go with if the information is what we need, then it's fine.
And I think on this one, Josh, it's just wait on your signature.
All right. Nice picture.
Yeah. You got that one?
Like, and Diaz. Michelle, is everybody, from the conversation that was going on earlier and from previous discussions I've had with folks, does every department have a different way of processing, a different procedure for processing their bills? I mean, because they all have to be paid through your office, is that correct? Even if they've got whatever credit card or whatever, it all ultimately comes through your office?
Yeah, some will pay their stuff through credit card for whatever reason. Maybe it's online day or whatnot.
Yeah.
But yeah, they upload it into a file, it's shared, I pull them off.
Yeah.
Turn them off, turn them through. Deeds does not do that. Turn them off. Deeds, I get like...
Right, they don't have a lot of...
Their bills are...
Right. Something like Road and Bridge would have a lot of bills, you know, I mean, little things that pop up here and there.
She prefers to get all of her at once.
Yeah.
And then scan all at once. That's what Deeds do. But it is a lot at once.
Well, because you're paying individually. You're paying, you're paying individual vendors and stuff, yeah.
What's that? Who's? At where?
Granville.
I'm sorry, you said Granville?
Landville.
They need to change the name on it.
Well, it says right there, Lanville.
Yeah, down here.
Oh, that's just gonna make it set up when you're listed too. Because the other ones that do them, just as they get them.
Yeah.
I just keep putting them in. Makes it easy. And that way too, if you run into a question, you can address it way earlier.
Yeah.
Plus you catch the ones that maybe late if you do waste.
Right. All that has to be entered into CIC before it is paid out, is it, is that right? Are you short a person in your office or are you full, full staff? Or were you, wait a minute, you were, you were evaluating, weren't you? I can't remember.
I've got my summer help in there now doing a lot of the extra stuff, so I'm really hoping to get that knocked out and get it. A lot of it is just... A lot that wasn't, I don't want to say it was wrong.
Right.
It just wasn't used to its full potential, so it's making it a little harder on us now trying to...
Sure.
Get that set up to use the potential.
And, you know, it, it's been talked about before, but no, your offices all been there about the same time. I mean, you know, it is, it's not like you've got somebody with a ten years' experience or something. Yeah. It's, uh, just, you know, going through the season of, uh, growing season, you know, your seeds have been planted, you know, we gotta work through it, and then eventually there'll be a harvest that comes in and...
I really wish that people would come in and look, because it's, I, I'll be very honest, it's a lot to wrap your mind around if you just don't even... Imagine what really goes into all the offices.
Oh, yeah. And most of them are in similar situations to what you're in also, you know, a lot of, lot to do, and then you, you, you feel like you're always unraveling the sweater. You'll, you never get a chance to stitch it back together.
Fix one problem, why couldn't you?
Yeah.
I'd really like to find, and I haven't dug into it yet, and, uh, there's a lot of requests for information on my tax stuff. It's all on the reports that come out like July, November, after us.
Yeah.
What we could convince that everybody could understand.
Make it accessible.
And make it accessible on our website, so they'll just go get it instead of us trying to...
Yeah.
Keep doing that, and it would save them money because...
Right.
Found anything? Any issues?
I did not.
Little stoppers? Other than you, she signed. Need a motion to approve paying the bills in the amount of ninety-two thousand, nine hundred, four dollars and ninety-one cents.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
She beat me to drop.
She did. She's already packing two, so I would make the next motion to adjourn if I were you.
Really? Until when? Do we meet again?
Till we meet again.
All right, so moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.